Today is August 23rd, 2018. Welcome to the planning board. I will entertain a motion for the agenda.
So move.
Just a second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The first item on our dance card is informal discussion for proposed Cumberland Farms.
Great. I'm Dan Monger. For those who don't know me, I'm with the law firm Posternak, Blankstein and Lund, representing Cumberland Farms. I'm a Situate resident, former planning board member. Nice to see all of you.
Good to see you.
So, most people are probably familiar with Cumberland Farms. But in case you're not, they are a Massachusetts-based company. They were the first convenience store in New England. They have over 600 stores throughout New England, down to Florida, over 200 in Massachusetts. You know, gas station convenience, great coffee, the chill zone. They've got a great new refreshed look to their stores and their lineup that you may have seen. So we are looking at the site over at 48 to 52 New Driftway. It's the South Shore Auto Parts, former South Shore Auto Parts store location. It's about a one-acre site. If you look up this plan we have up here, this is the original site plan that we drew up for the site. To the right of the site is some town-owned right-of-way. And then there's the little trailhead there between that and the Dunkin' Donuts, which is on the right. To the left is the Harbor Medical Associates Medical Office Building. The site has about 230 feet of frontage on New Driftway. Right now, the entire length of that is just open curb cut right now. The site is entirely within the commercial district. It's also in the Village Business Overlay District. The use is allowed by right. There's no wetlands, no floodplain, no natural heritage or endangered species. We had a Phase 1 done on the site as well. There's no environmental conditions there. So, sort of an ideal commercial site, really. There's no direct abutters that are residential. Back behind the site, if you see the entrance on the right there, that goes back into a site in the back. Right now, that's used mainly for school bus storage. And there's some construction materials back there as well. Across the street is the Green Bush MBTA lot. I guess I should introduce my team that I have with me here today. I've got John Marchand from the Farley Corporation. He's our engineer. And he can kind of go through some of the details of the plan. I've got Tracy Roll, who's with TM Crowley. She's here representing Cumberland Farms. They are the developer for Cumberland Farms. And I've got Erin Fredette, who is with McMahon Associates, who you may have seen before in here. She is our traffic engineer. As far as, the first plan that we came up with here, the site plan, sort of the, somewhat of the standard recent Cumberland Farms layout. It's a front-facing, gas pumps in front, meets kind of the normal criteria for most of the Cumberland stores, the new stores that they're doing. We went ahead and requested an informal meeting with Karen and Brad, and Anne attended that as well, just to get some initial input on our plan. At this point, as you know, we've not formally submitted for application. This is just to get some more input, to get a better idea of what everyone's expectations are and what type of plan would work for the town. So we met on June 12th. And Bob Vogel and Neil Duggan came as well and gave us some input at that meeting. John, I don't know if you want to talk just a little bit about sort of the standard plan, and then we can go into how we revised it to meet some of the concerns that were raised at our first informal.
Sure. The basic layout of the site is the...
Excuse me, could you have him speaking to the microphone? Thank you.
The, the basic layout of the site is to have the, it's a 5275 square foot convenience store building, front-facing, New Driftway, with the four dispensers between the store and the road. The fuel tanks, underground storage tanks are to the left of the fuel islands and the trash to the left of the building as well. We feel this provides the best turning layout for the site.
Yeah, and as far as the access, the, if you see on the right there, there's an existing median there, and that's the access. People have been using that, you know, for years, coming in and out. And that'd be the primary access, ingress and egress point. On this plan, we're showing a right-out only on the left side of the site. There is the stoplight right there, and so we wouldn't be looking at a, you know, a full access point there. And it really would just be an outlet. I think in the studies we've done, people are going to use that area to the right primarily. And the site allows for the, the gas tanker to get in there, which is always a big consideration for these sites, making sure there's, there's room for that, for it to swing around. So, so we had our first informal meeting, and we had a discussion about the new Green Bush, I think it's called the Gateway District, is that right?
Yes.
The new draft zoning bylaws for that, and some of the goals of that, and took a look at that. And Brad and Anne and Karen shared some of those concerns with us. As a result of that, they asked us to go back and look at, if we could look at some different siding for the building that would maybe be a little more architecturally appealing. And also, they came up with the idea of discussing with the neighbor to the left there, a cross-access easement potentially, which we're looking at as well, which would allow us to eliminate the right-out only on the left side of the site there. So at our second informal meeting, we actually came up with a significantly revised and much better plan. And John can show you that. So this is somewhat of a customized plan for the site and for Situate. There's a couple other stores they've done this at, but this is not the typical. So, in this plan, you can see we're showing a cross-access there to the left into the medical office. That would require a little bit of reconfiguration of some of their parking there to make sure that works. At this point, we've only had a preliminary discussion with them, so we're not, you know, 100% sure this is going to be a possibility or not, but it's something that we're looking at, that we want to discuss further with them. We also pushed the, turned the building sideways, which was something that we were asked to take a look at. And as part of turning the building sideways, now it's got two primary architectural entrances and fronts to it, which is a lot more appealing when you see it coming up New Driftway. You'll actually see the two entrances and the columns and all of that. It actually works a lot better from a traffic flow perspective as well, because it pushes some of the parking spaces back to the right there. And the air tower, you know, where you fill up your tires, gets pushed into that back area there. It allows, you know, two pedestrian access points, two different areas for parking. So that, it provides all that without the cross-access. If we also get the cross-access, it also will help eliminate the other entry close to the stoplight on New Driftway, if we're able to come to an agreement on that with the medical office owners. John, anything else in particular about this layout that...
Yeah, I think the benefit of this would be the, the cross-access to allow us to access at the light at New Driftway. Essentially, it's, allows for the same tanker movement, just with the benefit of the cross-access.
And if you can see on the plan there, you can see there's sort of a counter in the middle of the building there. So when they have someone working there, they have to have a visual on every single gas dispenser for safety reasons, and they also have to be able to control the access points. And so that's a big, critical design piece in these designs. So this is the site plan we came back with. We discussed it with everyone, and we were asked, I guess in the new Green Bush Gateway District, there are some, there's this one plan for gas stations, I think it's called the backwards plan for gas stations that was being looked at, which is one where you have the building close to the street and the gas pumps behind the building. And that, we didn't think was really feasible for a whole variety of reasons, one, safety and otherwise. But that said, we were asked to take a look at that and see if we could push the building closer to the sidewalk and see what would happen if we did that. One of the features of the site is that it slopes down pretty significantly in the back, so it's, makes it somewhat challenging. So we did come up with a study plan just to see if this would work, as we were asked to do. And sort of as expected, it really doesn't work. It eliminates a lot of parking. As a result of needing to get the tankers back in, if you see the, the tanks are at the back of the site there, you have to make the access point on the right there really wide open to get the tanker around. And then we'd have to have an outlet in the back going real close to the entry to the medical office building. And when the tanker was back there, it would actually block one of the access points. And then also the slope, we found out of that, if we did this plan, see that driveway in the back there, it'd be at greater than a 10% grade. So it'd basically be like a ski hill in the winter. So, you know, we gave it a shot to see if it could fit, and it just really doesn't. It's a fairly small site, being one acre. Sometimes the sites are a little bit larger than that, but there's not a lot of room to do that. So, so that said, I guess if you want to go back to our preferred plan. So this is really the, the plan that we're working with. And it remains to be seen whether we'll have the ability to have a cross-access point. If we didn't have the cross-access point, we could fit on the same plan, that right-out only instead at that, at that same point. We'd have to move things a little bit, but it would still work with this plan. And I guess with that, I would just open it up for input and questions. We've got a lot of people here that can answer any questions besides myself.
So you've given up on having it on the side?
Yeah, I mean this...
Instead of the front?
Yeah, I mean, this one is turned sideways, the building is, but, but yeah, moving the building towards the front of the site.
Didn't work?
No. That was the plan I was just showing you.
Right.
Do you want to go back to that? We can...
Had you considered eliminating the gas feature altogether?
It wouldn't be economically viable for the project, so no.
I have to say, just as a general matter, it doesn't feel to me like it's the way it's going to be built. Whatever you build there, if it's like that, it's not in keeping with the objective of creating this as the gateway to Situate. You're just going to see that big canopy with the gas stations in front. And I just don't, I don't know how you reconcile that.
Yeah.
You know?
That was the point in the very beginning, when we sat down and talked to you about I mean, it's unfortunate, because really, good planning means less pavement. And this is nothing but pavement from, other than a strip of green on New Driftway, pavement all the way back and surrounding your store, with gas pumps. I guess you know how I feel.
Well, it is a use permitted as a right.
I fully understand it's a use permitted. I fully understand that. But that doesn't mean that I have to like it. I think, really, under the circumstances, maybe if you made the store itself a little bit telescoped down, that maybe you might be able to get away with having a circular flow and having the gas stations through the back. You need four pumps.
Yeah, we do need four pumps.
But if you telescoped this building down, so that you took maybe a quarter of it off, which means your trash and what have you would be in that particular area, then you could have your traffic go around and out.
Well, I mean, this, this does show the traffic go around and out. I think one of the questions, we're not even sure we can get a cross-access easement. So, even if we do, I think, I have to speak for the adjacent owners, but I'm not sure they're going to want that access point right, right by their entry of their medical office building. They already raised some concerns about having a cross-access at all on their site. We can certainly look into it, and are happy to do that. But as you can see, I mean, I'm not sure where else you would put a second access point other than at the back of the site, the way we show it. Even if you shrink the building, it still would be around the back.
Ben?
What is the current, with the current development on the site, what, do you guys happen to know what the percent impervious surface is?
Almost, it's almost all of it. It's, the right side is boat storage, and it's all paved in front, and it's got a, a brick building that runs in the back. So it's almost, mostly all impervious. There's a little bit around the backside of the building that is, I think there's some...
Brushy stuff.
Looks like some abandoned boats and some car parts and stuff.
Yeah.
Down the hill, but, but it's, yeah, it's, it's mostly impervious.
And, and with the, not necessarily this plan, but the one that, the, the front-page plan, that would be pretty similar in terms of impervious surface about full per...
Yeah, it'd probably be a little bit less, actually, because, can you flip back to the other plan? Right now, the, share the picture with me, but...
I do have an area, I mean, the GIS.
I don't know if you can see this, it's very small, but it's, well, it's 4852.
Right.
If you look at it, 48 is where South Shore Auto Parts is, it's pretty much all impervious.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with it.
Yes, it's 4852. So, pretty much the whole site has been, it's been a retail site with, you know, an old, I don't know what, 1950s building on it.
Right.
All paved. The other big improvement on doing anything at all here is that the, as I mentioned, right now, it is, it is open curb to the street from here to here. And it goes right into the page parking lot back to South Shore Auto Parts, which actually comes up a little bit closer, I think, around right here. So one of the things is there's the bike path that runs along here. So this would take it down to this entry that's already there, eliminate this, and put landscaping all along here. And if we got that, it would take it down to just one access point and would, you know, create this buffer all the way across versus what's there now, which someone could just go in there and just keep the building as is and fill it with retail, and you've got no traffic control and no buffer at all.
Yeah. I mean, I guess where I was going with that is, I'm trying to think between Anne's concerns, which I understand very much, and also kind of the plan that you guys are bringing to us today is really to take advantage of that potential for, like, landscape and green space, and maybe, like, step back a little bit from the hard engineering side, and maybe look at the landscape architecture and landscape design, and see how, you know, we could try to do something that still kind of greens the area, makes it visually, you know, so you don't see the gas, the canopy and the gas pumps and all of the...
Yeah.
Kind of concerns that, that Anne and Steve have, have brought up about kind of putting in this gateway district.
How do you hide that?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think you do, not, not right in the front. I think that, I think the building design itself, the ones I've seen, and I've done some, a little bit of research on the, the architecture and stuff, I think you build a nice building and all of that. But I think the, the gas pump canopy right, right in front, right on, run kind of the main way down there. I mean, you said we have a 1950s building there.
Yeah.
And it's been there since 1950.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's 2018, and, you know, if this goes in, that could be there for 50 years, right? And...
Yeah, you'd hope so.
It's a, it's a 50-year eyesore. That's, that's kind of how I'm looking at it. And, you know, if you could put all the gas pumps behind the building, and move the building up, and just kind of hide it all, but I'm, I'm sure that doesn't work for you economically, right?
It would if it fit on the site, and we tried to. It's just the site's an acre and it slopes in the back. So I mean, if it, if it worked, we would be doing, happy to do that. But there are some real restraints on this site.
Why do you have so much parking?
It's actually, most of it is required under the zoning bylaw.
25 spaces?
As many as 30-something.
It was 30-something before we talked to Bob, and then he said we could not count, we would only count the retail floor area for that calculation. We could take some storage and other spaces and use a lower ratio. So I can't remember on...
It says 13.
I don't know, John, if we've done that calculation or not.
We have. It's not reflected on these plans.
It says 33 is there, but 13 is required? I don't know the math.
It's 2, 2, 500 square feet to 200 square feet per. The numbers are rounded, but it's written 13 says.
Yeah, I think it was...
And then the warehouse space, too.
Right. Based on the building sector's interpretation, I think it was 19 or 20 required spaces.
Yeah, it was 27 originally, based on it being calculated using the retail of one space per 200 square feet. And we can eliminate some of that, because talking to Bob says, he said that you just apply the retail to the retail floor area, and you can use a lower ratio for the, the back storage area. So I think that takes it down to, what do you say, like, maybe around?
I think it was 19 or 20.
19 or 20.
Not sure. That's based on office space and warehouse space and retail.
And the other reason, in the experience at Cumberland Farms, that parking is really needed. So it does, if you don't have that, it's going to create all kinds of traffic congestion, because these stores, people do go in and out.
That would be a bad place for traffic congestion.
It would be. So I don't think you want to eliminate parking. I think if anything, you want to have as much as you can.
And I think that's why we kind of asked them to explore the idea of trying to go get an easement from the neighbors to go out that way. So it's less, there's a light, you know, for that, too. And it's, I'm just posing, going to follow up on Ben's comment about, you know, the board would definitely need to require the walkway in front. And is there any possibility of looking at expanding that island in the front, too, to put some, some dense, you could have trees, and then in the middle of that island, you could have some type of higher shrubbery, too, to try to help hide some of the canopy, too. But you just, you have to maintain site distances on each, on each end.
What's that?
Maintaining site distance, especially for that unsyntolized driveway.
Oh.
But there's still, but there's still room, I mean, you could have the trees, and then in the middle of the island, try to have some other type of landscaping that would, you know, not fall on your site triangles.
Right.
Panning?
How far did you try to, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up on the comment about putting the stuff behind. How far forward did you bring the building? Tried that?
I think as far as we could.
Within 10 feet of the sidewalk?
And I think that would probably even require a variance. And I'm not sure pulling the building closer.
And it has to be sideways? Or can it be the other way? And put the gas tanks behind the building?
Yeah, there's...
And have no parking directly in front of the building? Have it on either side?
I mean, there's, there's safety issues with that as well. I don't know how we would address that. But yeah, I mean...
This is not what I envisioned. I agree with Steve, to see a giant gas station. Can you tell me why you need four pumps? I mean, that's, you told me you have to have that, so...
Yeah, that's just the economic model to make it, to make it work. And that's, you know, what they do at all the stores, so it would, it would not work without the four pumps.
All of your stores have four gas pumps?
At least. Yeah.
This really, it's really not a convenience store. It's a, it's a gas station with, with a convenience store attached to it. That's kind of your model?
Uh, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, no.
You can't make it work as a convenience store by itself, so it's really a gas station.
Oh, yeah, no, it's the combination of the two, definitely, yeah. Yeah.
Bill?
Yeah, it's, it should be flipped. And I'm not sure that it, that it's impossible to put those gas pumps in, in the back. But you're really coming back up, and what I'm doing is opening it up and basically paving the entire acre. Yeah, I had a question on the building. The building is ordered back to 5,800, 5,700 square feet. And then you get, and that, on a base of what, 5,000?
5275.
5275. Now, in that 2,700 square feet, does that include your training, training rooms and your break rooms in that? Are those in the storage area?
I think that, the, the plan, the main plan we're working on, I think it's got a total net sales area of 2517 square feet.
Yeah.
So we have roughly 3,000 as the back, back storage area and all of that.
Restrooms.
Yeah.
So part of that is to have, be, be using it for storage. Part of it would be a training room, part of it a break room? So you've got more than 25, 2700 square feet?
Yeah, small office bathrooms, some storage.
What are the hours of operation?
Most of these are 24-hour operation.
24/7?
Mm-hmm.
365? And what about external lighting?
We haven't developed a lighting plan for the site yet. Typically, there'd be the lighting under the canopy, and they would have site lighting, area lighting at the tanks, at the, at the, the trash, and then along the perimeter, just to keep up minimum lighting.
But on a 724 basis, I'd have all of the, the gas pumps would all be lit? Front of the store would be lit?
Have to be if you're open, right?
Yeah, definitely. But there's ways to handle the lighting, you know, with the down lighting and the, you know, the advanced lighting, you know, controls it from spreading off-site and all of that. And there's ways to handle that with a, a good lighting design.
This is truly intense. And I don't think, listening to what the members have said, this is really sort of kind of what we envisioned coming to town. It's, as Bill has just pointed out, you're paving an acre. I wish that there were some way that you could either do it sideways or in the back. And, you know, turn the building sideways, push it forward as close to the front as you can get, and then have everything behind and circle.
Like, like this plan, or?
No. Turn the building sideways, put the pumps behind. And I don't, I don't understand why the building has to be quite that big. If you were to put a second story on it for storage and office space, you have your restrooms and your training on the first floor, in terms of handicapped access, et cetera, and your storage is upstairs, then you could telescope that building down. You could turn it, there are things that I think you can be creative. Really would like you to think outside the box. I mean, this is very, very...
I'm not calling.
Sorry. I mean, this is very important to the town.
Well, that's why we did this study. We normally wouldn't have done that, but we did that at your request, so...
I understand that, and I appreciate it, and thank you. But I think we, we need to go back to the drawing board and think a little bit harder. I like Bill's point of turning it sideways and have things in the back. I know that there's a slope there. I'm sure that that can be dealt with, because you're not in the floodplain. And you're not, and, you know, you, you're high and dry. I know you can do it.
If I could speak on that, there is a little bit of floodzone in the back of the site. Our, our plan is not to disturb the floodzone, but...
It's just the very tip, the point, right?
Yeah, there's a dash line toward the back of the site that's within the floodzone, so our intention is to not work in that area.
All right, well, I think you've heard what we have, our thoughts are on this. Karen, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, I, I mean, I agree with the board. I mean, landscaping needs to be considered, and stormwater management also needs to be.
and stormwater management also needs to be, um, considered as well. Anything further from the board?
Yeah, and I guess, Dan, I talked to you earlier about it, are they standard buildings?
The, the original plan was a standard building, this is a, well, if you go back to the other plan...
If I open a book up, a book someplace, I got Cumberland one, Cumberland two, Cumberland three.
Uh, I, I don't know, I mean, they are, they are standardized, because you got, you know, they definitely are big companies, they build a lot of stores, they have their preferred model for sure. We, we came in with what I would consider more of the standard one originally, and then we went back and did sort of a custom one, they've only done a couple stores with this, with the two architectural faces turned sideways, and so that was something, um, after, you know, hearing some initial input, they were willing to take a look at, they normally wouldn't, wouldn't do that for most stores. It's more expensive and it's more of a customized store. But there are, you know, definitely parameters for, mostly for the interior of the store, and then there are standards they've developed for branding, as you've probably seen the, you know, I think you guys had some of these, but if you look at the, what the stores look like, you know, with the, um...
Kind of picture one here, Bill. This one's closer to what they're talking about.
Yeah.
Which is the canopy with the store behind it.
This is sort of it.
That's one that they did with this sort of model, that's, um, that's in Riverside, Rhode Island. So that's the two entrance model versus the one.
Where are the pumps?
Uh, I don't have a picture of that, I think they're in front.
Yeah, take a look at this, Bill. Can you see it? Can you see this?
What about the, the traffic flow on the site? Have you looked at that?
So we're, we're waiting to get feedback from everybody and get a finalized site plan before we really start to look at how the traffic will flow, both onsite and on the adjacent roadways. As we should discuss, you know, looking into that cross access, that'll drastically change how traffic flows onsite, if whether or not we're able to get that, so definitely something we'll be looking into, providing a full study, um, once a plan has been...
Have you done any preliminary looking at the traffic?
That's a much bigger site, so it allows us to have it on the side, it's a much bigger site, but you can see the look of the pumps and how, and the look of the building.
Trying to be efficient in starting and stopping and looking to have...
So the, the actual building would be very similar to this building in New Bedford.
Slug flow traffic comes through there.
It's about a double or triple size, the site we're dealing with.
Train lets out and all that kind of stuff, and it's very, it'd be crazy through there.
Do you have any issues about a store speed open twenty-four seven?
There are some requirements in the general bylaws for, um, for self-serve pumps, I mean, there's some of it, so that we've provided them with the requirements of the general bylaw, um, which they would have to meet on that.
What about Patty's question about hours of operation?
We can look into that.
Yeah, there's a provision in the general bylaws about self-service pumps that, um, ask that you ask the Board of Selectment for input on traffic issues, so, um, early in the process, so, um, at the time we'd submit, then you would, um, we could go in front of them, or you could just send it over to them and get their input, but it is noted in the bylaw that they won't have input on traffic concerns.
Are there any of the conditions, are any of the alternatives that are looked at from a traffic standpoint, that's going to have traffic waiting in the road to get into the site?
How do you mean waiting on the road?
In other words, am I going to have traffic backed up waiting to get into, into the site, into the station, or into the store?
So certainly, the, the intent is not to have that, and that's where having the multiple access points helps with that circulation, it allows for multiple queuing positions, um, and, and multiple points for people to get in and out of the store, so, one, again, once we have a, a final plan, we'll be able to analyze it and, and provide what the expected traffic operations are, but certainly the intent is for not, that not to happen.
So when do the tankers deliver? They don't deliver during peak AM and PM, um, traffic times, do they?
No, I'd say generally not, and I know that's something that Cumberland Farms has approved to limit, since they have control over their, their fuel deliveries.
All right, is there anything else, people?
I guess.
Bill?
I'm a little slow.
It's all right.
I guess that I'm concerned about being able to provide the, the, the pumps in the back, and then this, and then the exit closer to the intersection. I guess those are the two immediate things that I'm concerned about. I'm willing to swap off what the number of, because I'm not sure in my own mind that you need thirty-some parking spaces, but I'm willing to swap them off for green, green space. Because I think if, you put it in the back, and I think with a minimum amount of landscaping, you can at least make this more attractive. I don't think attractive is right, but more attractive.
Or least offensive? Maybe?
No.
Or less commercial looking?
Yeah, that's...
Industrial, that type of thing? Ben?
I was just going to piggyback off Ann's earlier point about kind of thinking outside the box, and, uh, in my opinion, yeah, really folk, like, if you guys are going to go back to the drawing board, think kind of about, in, look into like, kind of innovative site designs, and in particular, I would recommend integrating the landscape architecture early on in the process, so you can make, I think that will really help kind of tick some of the boxes in terms of what the town is looking for aesthetically, while also helping you guys check off all your boxes about making this work on the site, like all the functional stuff, so, um, and I think it would be good to kind of see that come together in the next iteration, too, is like, what, what is this, the green space or the landscape, um, softening going to maybe look like, and it would be easier for us to visualize.
Yeah, I would, uh, I would add to that, that hopefully somewhere, somebody has addressed this aesthetic issue of the gas leak pumps right out front, um, and I, I would support Bill's idea of having them behind the building. And it's, you know, be happy to have another business in town like this, you know, but I, I think it's really sort of flies in the face of the overall Green Bush visioning plan and what the objectives are here, um, the way it's designed right now. And I, I don't know how to fix it for you, I'm just telling you what I, just telling you kind of how, how my, how I reacted to it when I saw it that way.
Yeah.
And this is, you know, it's, it's our next fifty-year chance, um, and I'd hate to end up with a fifty-year mistake.
And there are some issues that are unique to gas stations as well, from a safety standpoint as well, and most towns prefer to have the gas, well, they all do, the gas pumps in front, from a fire control standpoint, for accessibility and all of that. There's been other locations where it's been proposed to go in the, in the side of the store, even when it's not very close to the street, and fire marshals, I mean, we'll certainly get input from the fire department, but they typically don't like that. They want to be able to have a quick access to it at the front of the store, and then there's the sight line issue, so it's, um, it's not a simple, um, a simple fix.
I didn't imagine it was going to be...
We tried. If, if, maybe we had a bigger site or something, and maybe if it didn't slope in the back as much, um, you know, maybe some of that would be more achievable, but, um, when we tried turning it sideways and putting the pumps on the side, you saw the result, it was, uh, not easy to do, and certainly we would definitely need the cooperation of the adjacent landowner to even consider something like that, because we need a access point off the back. As you can see, the site kind of comes to the point in the back, so there's not really that opportunity to, you know, loop around like the Dunkin' Donuts, where you loop around the back of the building and come in the front. You'd have to have sort of a, more of a master plan flow with the medical office on the other side, and, um, you know, they expressed a lot of concerns about even having the short access in the front, um, just, I think, due to the nature of, um, you know, the people that visit the medical center and, and all of that, they were concerned about that and causing a traffic jam, or people going in for medical help, and elderly and all of that coming in and out of there, that that would be a problem having any access to their site, so, um, we'll certainly still pursue that, because it would be...
Yeah, I think that would be a better compromise, at least, you know?
Yeah.
And all of those people coming in are driving cars, and they must go to gas stations.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate you coming in, and you've heard our input. I think that you can make this work, think about telescoping that building down, putting your storage on the second floor, think a few, again, think outside the box, and this is the gateway into Situate. I will say we do need to get another gas station, but that said, we don't need it at just such a horrific cost. This needs to look, needs to look good, really good, and I know you can do it.
We don't need a CVS in Green Bush.
No, thank you, Bill, thank you so much. All right?
Okay, well, thank you, we'll take...
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you coming in.
Take a hard look at that and see if we can come up with something.
Okay, the next item is continued public hearing, scenic road, shade trees, ninety-two Neil Gate, and continued public meeting, site plan administrative review, common driveway. They're both?
They're both together, because we, you continue the public hearing and the thing together, and the applicant didn't get revised plans in time, um, to have them, they haven't been submitted yet.
Okay, fine. Okay.
So I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the site plan administrative review, public meeting, and scenic road, public shade tree, public hearing, for the proposed common driveway at ninety-two Neil, Neil Gate Street until September thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven thirty PM.
Second?
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have a continued public meeting, site plan administrative review of Fifty-Two Country Way, formerly Morning Glory's. Gentlemen.
Hello?
Hello.
Paul Rodrick, representing Gunther Tooties and Tony Chen. So we have redone the plans as requested, and what we have done is we've moved the order menu board speaker ones based forward, so the cars weren't backing up into the shared access. We've added a PVC fence screening off of the cooler that'll hide all of the HVAC and cooler condensers. Uh, when we get to the architectural plans, we are, uh, putting a roof over the cooler and completely screening in the cooler, so the siding is the same around the cooler as it is on the building, so you won't even be able to tell that there's a cooler in there. The dumpster location stays the same, the fencing around the dumpster pad will be the same PVC material, chain link fence. We have incorporated the landscape plan from that Fifty is providing to the site and the trees that they're including in here, um, and then this area, we're planning on, on, on grasses. I think that's, we did have a bike rack that we've added over in this area here. And I think that was most of the stuff on this, on the site itself. We redid the front elevation, so the, the windows don't go all the way down anymore, there's a little area there, so it looks more like windows than a bunch of doors. Uh, signage is on the front of the building and out on the street, which we just got that today, which I'll show you pictures of. Uh, we do have the permit for the sign, so that will be part of that. We've eliminated the big drive-through sign that was on this side of the building. We got rid of the sign that was on Stockbridge, and we added some windows in there. Over on this side right here, you, that you can see that the cooler is completely screened in, we have the PVC fence. The one thing that is going to be exposed is a generator, he needs, with the power situation over here constantly going down, he can't have the cooler go down because of the items that are in there, so, um, and we can't put the generator in there because of clearances and exhaust and things of that nature. So it is in its own case, uh, but you will, you will see that. This shows you a little better, the, the fence and the generator. And then, um, we just kind of finalized the interior plans, which I got, uh, last night, which I brought a couple of copies for you. The seating, um, has not changed. We're still at sixteen seats. And then we have the four seats out on the patio area. These are the preliminary plans for the sign out on the road, which I think is a little more attractive than what's there. Yep.
Did you see it?
And this is on, uh...
Country Way.
On Country Way, just before you get to Stockbridge, that's where that is?
Yes.
Will it be lit?
Will the sign be lit? There is...
Uh, it has to be external, but...
That is cor- it, it will be lit from the ground.
Beneath, yeah.
Yes. And that's how the current one is lit.
And you'll make sure that however that is lit, that it doesn't bother anybody driving by it?
Driving, yes.
And this is, this is sort, this is two scales, so it's an accurate, accurate representation of where it is with respect to everything else?
Yep.
So it's inboard enough, people trying to get out won't be blocked?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that is going to run perpendicular to Stockbridge, so the, the lights will shine that way and not out onto Country Way.
Karen?
They have done most of the changes that the board asked for last time and that the Design Review Committee recommended, however, we didn't get the stuff till yesterday, um, and, um, I, I don't have a full motion or anything, um, made for you. Have, have you had any success in, um, coordinating with your neighbor, Fifty Country Way?
No. And, and I don't know how far along they are with their process, and, you know, when they want to do curbing, we're going to extend the curbing, uh, you know, their initial curbing came here and then turned into the building, and we're going to extend that curbing down to there, um, but no, we, we haven't.
Is the extension the same, look and feel as existing?
Yes. Yep, pre-cas concrete.
And did you address the, um, the runoff issue?
The, the, the runoff issue that we were having through, um, the downspouts over here, which we're piping through the bed and across the road, yes.
So that's in there somewhere?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't see it.
Yep.
And there's, uh, so your engineer has looked at that in terms of grades, et cetera, that it's going to get to the catch, the catch basin, et cetera?
Yeah, because we're not changing grades, the, the grades, the, the parking surface that's there now, we're, we're not changing that.
No, but you're, you're dumping the water and expecting it to go across the island to the, to the drain?
It's going to go through the island...
That's what I mean.
And out onto the road.
Right.
Yes, that will come out...
That's what Karen's asking, is, are those grades sufficient to make that happen?
Yes.
In other words, it could go the other way, and you'd end up with...
Nope.
A pond. So you've looked at that?
Yeah, because we have, we have curbing here... Yeah, 'cause we have, we have curbing here, and everything is pitching this way towards this catch basin over here. So all of this, all pitches this way, and all of this is, you know, pitching out towards the front, so anything that comes out of here is all going to go into this catch basin over here.
Right, it's the two corner, it's the roof drains that are coming down on the other side that are dumping onto the road that have to go across.
This, this, this one over here and then this one over here, yes.
And so you've looked at the grades?
Yes.
So when you dump water there, it will definitely run?
Yes.
Okay.
Comments from the board? Ben?
No, I think they did most of, kind of, what we talked about is, most of it's on here. The only, the only thing I could see in the, might be just, I don't, I don't think it needs to be announced, there's so many moving parts with the other project, but this little strip, I think on the other side is a public right-of-way sidewalk, and the idea is that to make this whole area eventually more walkable and get people, you know, riding bikes and walking to the area and shopping and hanging out, going to the train, whatever.
Yeah.
So just in the future, you guys might see an influx of foot traffic coming in, and it might be something, you might have a section that's loomed and seeded that all of a sudden now it's dirt, 'cause everyone cuts across the lawn or something, or, those are things you won't really know till people start coming in.
You know, I mean, we see them now, the time that we're on the site, is when they're coming across Stockbridge, they're not walking here, they're cutting through-
Right.
You know, the planting bed, I don't see any advantage to anybody walking down this area here, or even behind the building.
Yeah.
'Cause there's a fence that comes all the way up to this point, so when they're coming around, they're gonna go down that way.
Yeah, so, yeah, my point is just, I guess, for you guys from a maintenance perspective, it might make sense to put a couple stepping stones or a few pavers or something, if somebody's, if they're always, if you see that foot traffic is always cutting a certain way-
Mm-hmm.
Just to kind of encourage the-
Yeah.
Walkability of the area.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
It's the old Boston approach to making streets, right?
And we'd love, we'd love to see foot traffic, you know?
That's to your benefit?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Karen?
Nothing, good job.
No, I think they captured our comments.
All right, here is the issue, gentlemen. Because all of this was such a late submittal-
Mm-hmm.
We do not have an approval written up. So, Karen, what do you suggest?
I, I, I just didn't have time to do it, and I-
And I understand, and I mean-
I just, I think that it would be really important for you to coordinate with Mr., with the owner of 50 Countryway, to make sure that, I mean, there's certain things that they're required to do, and even though on this access and utility easement, and I want to make sure that you and he are in agreement with all that, et cetera, I mean, because he owes you curb, he owes a certain amount of curbing, but you're expanding the curbing, you know, you can't block each other's access, et cetera. I just, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, and we've notified him because we fenced in the area.
Yeah, I, I've seen it.
And we've contacted them to say, hey, you have stuff on our property that needs to be removed, with no response.
This is what I would like to do. I'd like to put you on the agenda for the next meeting. I know that this is upsetting to you because you just want to get going here. However, because of the late submittal, because we need to have something from Genta, 50 Countryway, so we can have all of our ducks in a row, you won't be here more than a few minutes, maybe 15.
I wouldn't think so, I mean, I just, I mean, I just wanna-
This meeting is when?
This meeting would be the-
13th of September.
13th of September.
We only got, winter season's coming, so, we only got a few months in the contraption, so I don't want this, the whole project to all the way into the next summer.
It won't.
So it would take a lot of times, no, I understand that, but on a contraption standpoint, it's a lot of work to be done, so we can't afford to go into the next summer, and I mean, I mean, contraption always-
So can, can, can we start our permitting process on the building with a condition that everything is approved here?
Yeah, they won't issue the building permit unless you have a-
Yes.
Site plan approval.
Right, they won't issue a building permit, I mean-
I don't know that, I don't know how much work Building Department will do in advance of that, I don't have any objection to them.
But, I mean, we don't want to wait till the 13th and then apply on the 14th, and then we're another 30 days out from there.
Karen?
I think that would be up to Mr. Vogel, right?
I would think that'd be up to Mr., have you started, have you done it, have you started with the Board of Health?
Uh, we did-
For asbestos and, you know, pest for a demo?
Yes, that's all done, asbestos is done, pest is done.
Okay.
All that stuff is all taken care of.
Is there not an appeal period with this as well?
It's site plan administrative review, it's not, it's not a special permit.
Right.
So, is there a possibility, Karen, I'm just gonna throw this out to you, that we could theoretically approve this, the conditions to follow on the 13th?
Pretty open-ended.
I know.
I'd be a little concerned about the person that we're sitting with.
Yeah. I think it would be better if, I mean, we could draft the decision and circulate it and all that kind of stuff, and be ready to go.
I started, I started to do it, I mean, I just, yeah, I started to do it, and I just, I ran, I'm sorry, I ran out of time.
And I understand, you know, on our end, we had the civil engineer, we had the architects, we had the interior designers, and trying to coordinate all of those people in two weeks.
I would think the best you can do here is that we'll get the decision drafted and we'll internally look at it and be prepared to discuss it and vote on it on 13th.
Yep.
In the interim, I don't know that that should prevent you from starting the permitting process with the Building Department, it will prevent you from having a building permit.
That's, we understand that, 'cause there's that process.
And I dare say, I don't know if they can bifurcate those things and do a demolition permit, just a demolition permit, before there's a site plan approval, or they really need that.
I'm not, I don't know the-
We could file for a demolition permit tomorrow if we wanted to.
Yeah, I think you could do the demolition if you wanted to, but-
But I think from approval standpoint, they want to know what's going back there.
Yeah.
It makes their job, I think, a little easier.
That's why I threw that out, and-
Yeah.
The thing, the concern that will be, that's in their special permit, and will be in any approval that we give you, is that the access and utility easement must remain open at all times.
Mm-hmm.
So that you're not blocking their access, and they're not blocking your access.
Yeah.
Even during construction. That's, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a big concern to, I think, both parties.
Well, that'll be in the decision.
That'll be in the decision, I mean-
You just need to prepare for it, right?
For us, we don't have to bring any more utilities in, our gas line's already in. The little bit of work that we have to do in this access area is extending the curbing, and we're not gonna block any more than they are to put the curbing in that they have to do here, so, we, our electrical service comes in from here, the water service is over here, so we're not cutting open or doing any work in the easement area.
And your sewer connection?
Sewer connection comes around the back of the building.
And have you coordinated with DPW on the maintained, the deep-
The grease trap, the grease tank?
Maintain, I mean, last time I wrote that the DPW wanted, you have to coordinate with them for the maintained sewer flow, et cetera? Have you spoken with them?
We have spoken with them, and they did give us a, an as-built of what was there prior to the work done at 50. So I don't even know if they have the current as-built of what the change was over there.
All right, so, we will continue this until the 13th. Start in the building office tomorrow about your demolition. Make sure you've touched base with Board of Health, and, I mean, you've got a laundry list of things that you need to do before you even get the approval, so, okay? Nothing further from the board?
I think that's it, they did a good job addressing all of the questions we had. Unfortunately, as Karen said, it's a little late, just in our process, 'cause we've got a lot of things going on, so it sort of pushes us to that next, next meeting, but-
But we've, we've met all of everyone's concerns as far as what needed to be addressed here.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think, I think you got a pretty comprehensive list from Karen last time, and it looks like you addressed it.
I just, I haven't, I mean, I haven't really coordinated fully to, I mean, I started writing, I started working on this today, but it's, we're just, we're very busy.
No, I understand, and I'm not, at the ninth hour that we got it to you?
We're trying to treat everybody the same, you know, same fairness.
All right, well, thank you very much.
I would also say one other thing, to the extent that they've attempted to contact 50 Countryway on all of this stuff, if the guy is just not responding, you know, we'll condition their approval with what they need to do, but at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's the other guy's responsibility to talk to him, too, right?
I understand, and so I started-
We can't hold them up forever because he won't talk to them.
No, I started writing things that reflect what's recorded and what was approved in 50 Countryway about who does what, and I started to put that in here, and I, but I just, we always like people to talk to each other, and to make sure-
Sounds like they've tried.
I agree with you, with, you know-
I guess my point is, I just don't want to hold them up for the want of somebody returning their phone calls, right?
We had been called a few times already, and the one, the one gentleman, Michael, said we're gonna take a dancer on next day, two weeks later, they're still there, so, and I mean, they seems like one people, they said, oh, yeah, we're everything okay, and that's, and just no response at all, so, it's just-
Our approval may or may not change any of that, so you'll still have to chase them.
Yeah, we'll keep reaching out to them and doing what we need to.
You can't let them talk.
Their occupancy hinges on them doing-
Their stuff.
All of this stuff, too.
Yep, that's right.
And how far are they out, you know, in regards to that?
Well, they have occupancy in the first building, right?
Okay.
That's it.
Temper. Just the first building along Stockbridge behind where Morning Glories is, right? The other two, they don't have occupancy per minutes yet, four.
All right, gentlemen, thank you so much.
We need to do a continuation.
Time, what, how's the agenda?
You want to say 8 o'clock?
8 o'clock.
Just make it up.
Yeah, you make it up. Move to continue the public hearing on Gunther Tooties until 8:00 PM on September 13th.
Second.
Is there need, do we need to continue a decision period, or is it just that?
It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting.
All right.
I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we're into old business, new business, et cetera, et cetera. A Form A, A and R, 44 Ocean Avenue, applicant owner Donald F. and Joan M. Gillespie.
All right, Greg?
For the record, Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer, Morris Engineering. This is an A and R approval, not required, plan for the division of land of 44 Ocean Ave. Picked it on the plan, Ocean Ave is at the bottom of the page, Ocean Ave is a public street that is paved, there are utilities within it. The property here is highlighted in black, consists of just over 50,000 square feet. This is located in the R3 zoning district, requiring 10,000 square feet. The proposal is to create a division line here, which would create the property into two lots, Lot 1 being the new construction lot, consisting of 10,000 square feet, Lot 2 being the remaining land with the existing house on it, at 40,379. Both lots have the 100 feet of frontage, and both lots have the 10,000 square feet of land area required for endorsement.
Thank you. Karen?
Yeah, both lots have access and frontage, even though there is a guardrail in front, it's, I mean, they'll probably have to do some filling, but it has access and frontage, and the board should endorse the plan, 'cause it meets their requirements. They will, they will need to coordinate and keep stormwater on site, but it has access and frontage.
Comments from the board?
Do we have our typical statement that we're not endorsing it as a build of a lot?
Yeah, we'll stamp that on there.
All right. Ben, nothing? Are you gonna rip the house down that exists?
We got delayed for 15 months from historical, but we're gonna rip it down in 15 months and build a new one there.
Okay, you're gonna fill out all the gardens, you're gonna fill out Owen?
Uh, the garden, actually, that lot, the garden is on that lot, so the garden, on the left side of the house, we get filled in, the stuff to the right on the corner of Cherry Lane won't get touched.
I move to endorse as approval not required, a plan of land in the town of Citrus, Mass, to choose its 44 Ocean Ave, prepared by Morris Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant owner Donald F. and Joan M. Gillespie, dated 8/118, as the division of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision, because it shows every lot of the plan has frontage of at least a distance presently required under the Citrus zoning bylaw on the public way of Ocean Ave.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Curtis Estates, Welby Builders, discussion of condition- No, we're not doing, okay. Just to let you know that the discussion of condition 29 has been postponed, we will not be talking about that tonight. Permission to trim invasive vines in the 20-foot buffer area to save two trees, tree cutting along frontage buffer to rebuild stone wall.
Good morning, I'm Kevin, and I'm great handsy Ross Engineering, Welby. This is a, a interim asgol plan of what we have of the, these are the two trees that we're trying to save, and this red line is what the current limit of fill is. These berms were, they were located, and they're, they're pretty good as far as location goes. The grading from, from here to the trees is steeper than a three-to-one slope, and the reason why it's steeper than a three-to-one slope is we want to save those trees. Filling over the trees, over its root wall and up to, you know, the trunks, is a threat to the tree, more often than not, they don't survive. If you fill too much over the root wall of the tree, they will die, so, you're on risky business, if you want to, if you want to grade this out at three-to-one, we can, but you're significantly putting risk at, at losing the trees. What we'd like to do, and this is in conjunction with what Peter Palmieri had made a suggestion, is we could put a light riprap and stabilize that slope, even though it's not three-to-one, if it's riprap, it'll, it'll add stabilization to, to the slope, so that if it's at a, you know, one and a half to one, or two to one, that riprap will stabilize the slope, as opposed to a three-to-one being stabilized with a moment's speed.
Which will wash down onto the tree?
Yeah.
What about vines, there's something here about-
We're gonna-
We're gonna, we're going to trim, both of those trees we're trying to save because of the neighbor of the abutment.
These vines.
Yep.
They're, they're both, they're covered in vines, so we're gonna cut the vines probably at the bottom at this point. And put a gap so that the vines die.
What is it poisoning from?
That are sweet.
It's, it's, I'm not sure what.
A lot of it's bittersweet, I mean, very, very large, bittersweet. It was in the July 31st report.
These are, these are the two trees in the slopes that we're talking about.
So how do you treat the, if you, if you go with the riprap, how does it end at the tree? Does it end up right against the tree, or is it?
No, if you riprap these slopes, it, it ends, the toe of that slope where it hits the ground is, I'd estimate it, you know, a couple of feet anyway, two and a half, maybe three feet off the trunk. Maybe more, maybe three, three, maybe three and a half feet.
I might be looking at the wrong picture, but it looks to me like it's going pretty close to the tree. Is this the right picture?
The one that just gave us.
I'm looking at the one in the report. That, that looks like it's sloped right, would you change the slope or something? It's just gonna stop here and go over?
I'm not sure what that, what tree that is or where.
I think this, this was Merrill's report on this issue.
What? That does not look like what I saw when I was.
This isn't the tree. This is, this is the, um, there are two of them, and they're very close together.
I think there's one just behind this one.
I think this is the tree you're looking at here, and there is room to get over to that tree.
Okay.
The other one is the first tree, and, and that's pretty close.
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at here.
This is about an 18-inch silt sock, so I think it's 18. So you're looking at maybe a foot and a half between the toe and, but you can see the lines that we're talking about.
No, I see those, yeah.
Karen?
Well, as Peter Palmieri's on vacation, I believe that the silt sock is at the limit of work and that the slope was, that this was constructed prior to, I mean, it being fully laid out. Having said that, I agree that the vines need to come off the trees, but it has to be done from the uphill side, and it has to be done by an experienced person who's skilled in cutting, in cutting these type of vines.
Okay. Ben, you're a guru when it comes to this?
I think cutting the vines is fine. They're probably invasive species anyways. I agree with Karen that you're probably gonna want somebody that is a licensed pesticide applicator with experience dealing with invasive species.
The problem at this point is one of the, at least one of the trees we can't get to because they've built the berm already. So.
With equipment?
The only, the only, well, what the tree cutter suggested last week was to just, just cut them and they'll die.
Yeah, no, I agree.
That's how they do it.
But my point is that you probably want to do a cut and dab method, so get somebody that knows what they're doing with herbicide, because otherwise it's just gonna grow right back. I mean, if you're, if the intent is to permanently remove it, that would be the method is to do a cut and dab. So you, you cut the vines at the base and then treat it so the whole thing dies systemically. Use it with glyphosate or some other ingredient like that, but, um, that's.
Could you get to the tree to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh yeah, that's just.
We could just send somebody in with a chainsaw to, you know, to cut a gap, and then whatever we need to treat it with, that's what we'll do. I know, Karen, we talked about cutting the vines down off the tree.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about that, but it has to be done by a professional.
But it can't, the problem is now we can't get to it.
Can't get to the tree? Person can't get to the tree?
A person can get to the tree.
That's how they usually do it.
But they need probably a lift.
We would have done it with a bucket truck, yeah.
Well, just hire a guy who climbs it, cut it.
Well.
There are plenty of those guys out there.
I think as long as we kill the vines, the trees will survive.
That's what I do in my work. I usually find that I do more damage trying to remove them, but it takes a couple of seasons for them to bounce back.
What about the slope and the riprap? Karen, you want to comment on that?
Peter Palmieri hasn't reviewed their proposed solution, because he's on vacation.
So then we will hold that in abeyance as far as the riprap is concerned until Palmieri is back. But in the interim, you can cut your, your vines.
Does the board have any objection in some areas where there are no trees, where there's just thorn bushes and that sort of thing to grading the toe into the 20-foot buffer?
The limit of work is the limit of work. Yes, I, I do not recommend that. We, we've had multiple neighbors calling on this project, and the limit of work is the limit of work.
I'm not talking about disturbing anything in the 20-foot buffer, just, just grading the toe in and lumen seeding.
Well, wouldn't you have to do that anyway? I, I'm confused now. Wouldn't you have to, wherever you hit the limit of work, you'd have to grade down to that, right?
Down into it, but when that's.
To the limit of work, right?
Right, but what I'm saying is there are plenty of areas within the, the limit of work that are wide open, or they've got thorn bushes, or they've got, it's just there. And, and there, there's, there's absolutely no impact on the open space if we, if we end up grading a foot into it in some places.
Well, why would you need to do that?
Well, as it happened, we've got, you should take a ride out there. I know you've been out there, but it is, these things are, if we ever have a storm, these things become necessary. We all better have a boat somewhere, because this is huge. And the, and the, and the berm itself is at the point where we can't get a three to one slope.
In a couple of areas.
Well, that's what you, why you're proposing to do riprap, though.
Riprap in the area of the tree, because that's even a little closer.
Oh, there are other areas that you can't get the design slope? I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Not a lot, but there are.
That's what the construction report from last week said, yes.
So are you putting riprap in those areas?
We can.
Well, if you don't, you're gonna end up with it all washed down into the.
Well, we.
Right? A one-to-one slope is like 45 degrees, right?
But we don't have a one-to-one out there.
No, no, I mean.
This looks pretty bad.
At the, at the max here, um, the, the toe of slope, it, it was a little bit higher than what the, the design plan called. It was, it's about four, four tenths higher, higher of the grade. I mean, they did, they did a good job. I mean, but to, to pinpoint it exactly, um, it's, it's tough. And then it could go about eight tenths away from the, the buffer, which is, you know, pretty much what the design plan called. And then, then it would daylight right at the line. Actually, it would be a fraction of a foot beyond, just because some of that existing grade got, got matted down and cleared when they put the, the silt sock down. So if the grades, you know, it only has to be three tenths lower for it to run out another foot. What we'd like to do is just to let that slope naturalize. If we do that, we'd have a, we'd have a 23-foot buffer instead of a 20-foot buffer if we lumen seeded it.
I'm confused.
So am I, Karen.
Can you, I'm just, can you explain that again? I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry.
Up to 23 feet now?
Where, where is the, where are you grading? You're, you're grading to the bottom of the silt sock, correct?
Right.
That's where it is right now.
Yeah.
It's a grade, right?
Where it, where it daylights, and, uh, you know, there, there is a modest intrusion into, into the 20-foot buffer here. But we're, we're talking about, you know, a slope that goes like this, and it's this high. If we just let it naturalize, it'll still be a, a buffer.
Yeah, we're not trying to change the buffer zone. We're just trying to grow some grass in it. I mean, that's.
Well, what's gonna happen is the, the brush and everything that's, that's out there, it'll, it'll just go right up to where the stone is, uh, on the top of the dyke. So what you'll have is more of a 23-foot buffer rather than a 20-foot buffer. And that, that naturalized vegetation would be at a higher elevation. So some, so an abutment from a nail lot looking into the site, they're gonna have a better live buffer than, than if it was terminated at the, at a lower elevation at the, at the 20-foot.
Can we have Peter Palmieri review this?
Yeah, he should be back from vacation next week.
Okay. So that we can dispense with any confusion, and I think I need to go for a walk.
So if Peter Palmieri finds this acceptable, is, do they, do they have to come back to the board? That's, I think, what we.
No.
Okay, that's.
No. All right.
Anything that changes the slope, I'm expecting that will get modified, particularly if we're putting riprap or whatever that is. I'm expecting that gets reflected in the operation and maintenance plan, that somebody's responsible for maintaining that.
I don't know.
Because I don't, I don't want to see the undermining of your riprap, and then suddenly nobody's kind of got that on their radar screen.
Well, there's, there's a couple of ways that we can take care of it. There's usually less maintenance with riprap, because it doesn't have to be re-lapped or mowed. And it's, it's a more stabilizing product. But as a safe guide, we could modify the O and M and put something in there that the riprap is there, has to be inspected. If it gets dislodged, it'll have to be restored.
That's exactly what I'm asking.
Well, there isn't, there are sections of the homeowners association that require the association to maintain everything about the basins.
I want, yeah, and what I'm saying is you're modifying the design that they were anticipating maintaining. So I would like to make sure that the maintenance plan reflects that.
Sure.
All right, the next.
Assuming Peter says he's okay with it.
The other thing we have here is the frontage buffer, do we build a stone wall?
We, we are proposing to start a stone wall prior to the opening of school. Not the wall itself, but preparation for it. There is only one or two trees that we would even consider holding on to. This is one of them, the big old tree, that is right directly behind the existing wall. So that's the tree I'm talking about, and what we'd like to do is to just stop the wall sufficiently on either side of it and, and allow the tree to stay there. The rest of what you'll see along the street is this kind of thing.
I know, I went by there tonight.
There's, there's just junk. It's all cherry trees, and there's nothing.
It's all second and third growth.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the plan calls for us to, to be at least a foot off of the load, the road layout for Anvinal Road. Plus the, so we're gonna do the five-foot sidewalk, a two-foot strip, and a two-and-a-half-foot wall. And that's about, so this is what needs to come down, this stuff here.
But you're gonna try, you will save this tree?
That's the plan.
Good.
Yeah, this is the stuff that's.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, that was all farmland at one time.
Out in the front there.
Wells, yeah.
So we plan to clean it up. I mean, the objective is to end up with, with a front or subdivision that looks, you know, kind of like the wall, and it's kind of like.
Yeah.
So this tree is actually in front of the wall?
No, it's behind it.
Oh. I thought you said it was like seven feet. It's not that tree?
I don't think so.
No.
This is the tree that they want.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was the tree you were talking about.
That's the tree they want to save. This looks like junk, doesn't it? Sounds scruffy stuff.
So is where the stone wall is now, that's where it's gonna go back?
Where it will be is about two feet in, on the other side of that, so it will, it will run right into that tree.
But you'll give it enough room to grow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't be my favorite. I think it kind of takes away from the wall, but it's a beautiful tree, so.
I've seen stone walls actually go, that are empty now, that have gone around trees, one on Country Way. So. All right, discussion about this?
I was just unclear where the limit of work was, and I thought it would be best if they came back to the board to just verify that that's what you guys all agreed to.
Discussion? Bill?
No.
Ben?
I mean, I, I, I mean, I understand clearing it out, and I, it is gonna look cleaner and neater. I guess my only concern would be people's perceptions of what is there. Because when they go by now, they see a wooded space. When that's gone, it's gonna be wide open space, and that is gonna be, people are gonna talk about that and notice that.
Well, there's, there are still a lot of trees left in there.
Yeah, there are.
Right, because there's.
They have a basin, and then there are trees on the other side of the basin.
Oh, yeah, no, I, believe me, I understand if you're trying to construct the, the masonry in there, that this, this stuff's kind of not, not ideal, so, I guess just a comment and not necessarily my, an opinion, but.
We're gonna get it anyway.
How far behind the stone wall do you have to clear? Could you put a limit of the clearing behind the stone wall, behind the existing stone wall? The other day you said maybe three feet is what you need behind the existing stone wall.
It should go, Karen, it should go five feet of sidewalk from the other side of the curb.
Right.
Two feet of grass strip.
Right.
And it's either two or two and a half feet of wall.
Right.
So nine and a half feet, that's about where we will end up.
But they have to dig a footing from the wall.
Well, they have, they have.
They have to dig in stone to place the walls, so there might be a little.
So how far?
So maybe, so maybe it's another.
10 feet.
Yeah, maybe it's another six inches, 12 inches.
So can you lay that out prior to actually cutting?
There really isn't anything else in our way. Everything else that's, would be considered to be saved would be, um, further back. We're not gonna, we, the only trees that we're concerned with are the ones that really almost abut the law.
And they're young trees. They're not old.
No, and they're, well, some of them are kind of weird looking.
It's all right with me. I think if we, we set a 10-foot limit, whatever the limit is, we ought to just stick to it. It's like having a 20-feet, 20-foot buffer that's 23 feet.
10 feet from the road.
The curb.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be, the road layout for Anvinal is seven feet off the curb.
Okay, and you're going another three feet beyond that?
The two feet for, for, um, for grass strip, and then another probably two and a half, three, three feet thereabouts for.
So what's that?
For digging out the wall and putting a base in it. So it's about 10 feet.
Yeah, there you go.
10 feet from the curb.
Yes.
From the road curb. Is that right?
Yeah. Check that. I would, yeah, that, that sounds about right.
All right.
So it is said, so shall it be written.
So you want to make that as a motion, as insignificant, as a minor change? So that it's, it's recorded. I think that protects all sides.
So I'll entertain a motion, how, what do we want to say, Karen?
Minor field change?
A minor field change of not more than 10 feet to reconstruct the stone wall on Anvinal.
Well, preserving this one.
One beautiful tree. One beautiful tree.
Time out, let me do those numbers.
Yeah, that's... They have to build this wall.
Five-foot sidewalk, we've got...
Two-foot strip and three feet for a wall. Let's say we need more than 10.
Or we'll give you 12.
Thank you, that'll work.
All right?
I guess it wasn't written.
Well, no, what it is, is that we ended up... Originally, we thought around nine-and-a-half, 10 feet. But in order to get that offset from the road layout, we've gotta go back even a little further.
All right, a minor field change?
So it's 12 feet then?
Twelve, not more than 12 feet from the curb. Do you need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Blanchard Farm Estates, continued stone wall discussion. Who's here for that?
Mr. Barry and Mr. Tedeschi both could not make it this evening. I received an email late this afternoon that I've been talking to... Talking to what's legally allowed to do and how to... What they can do. The bond... The amount that we're retaining in surety right now for the stone wall is $3,500. And Amory has determined, as Mr. Barry and Mr. Tedeschi both told you last time too, that the wall, it's no functional purpose. I mean, it was aesthetic, et cetera. And so the line item is $3,500 for the stone wall. There's a contingency factor and an inflation factor in the estimate. So that amounts to approximately $4,000. So Blanchard Farm LLC is willing to voluntarily forfeit the surety for the stone wall for $4,000 to be used to... For a town interest. Now, if you recall a few years ago, you... In the subdivision approval for White Ash Farm, there was $10,000 that the applicant put in that has to be spent by 12, by July 19th or July 10th, 2019, for storm scepter. And this money could go towards that.
Sounds like a plan.
A storm sep owned by the town?
Yes.
This is replacing something we already have that needs to be repaired?
It was...
I don't remember it, that's what I'm asking.
It was White Ash Farm, Condition 19.
Yeah.
Prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall provide the planning board with a check of $10,000 towards the size of sizing, purchasing, and installation of a storm scepter to be installed by the town south of the existing catch basins between 310 and 318 Country Way and at 320 Country Way in order to treat storm water.
So is that...
That's down...
Is that coming out of the rain garden there or...
No, it's in the roadway right away.
Right, but the water that's coming in there, is it coming out of the rain garden?
No, this is... No.
This is to do something for the road, not for the...
This is to do something on a totally different project. Totally di... I mean...
No, I know where White Ash Farm is. I'm saying, was it intended to take runoff from White Ash Farm and deal with it?
No, no. It was intended as a...
To improve the storm water condition on the road?
To improve the water quality of the road because it's, you know...
Runs across the road there, right? Okay. Now I'm remembering it.
I know they are working on that right now in DPW and they're well aware of the deadline because that money has to be returned. And Mr. Barry and Mr. Tedeschi are willing to donate... Well, not donate, voluntary forfeit the surety of $4,000 to that cause.
And does that cause need more money?
Um, yes, it does.
Goes without saying.
She got another wall?
Pardon?
I said, does he have another wall?
I actually live at 318 and the water pools up ever since they put the sidewalk in. It seemed to me, so like the last two or three years, it pulls up a lot right at that one storm basin right across from...
Which side of the entrance?
One street over, I mean, one... If you're facing the project, there's a house to the right and then I'm on the opposite side of the street. And there's a storm basin just in front of my property that seems to be plugged like all the time. And there's a gentle slope and all the water, everything runs on one side and on the other side and it all kind of collects in the middle. And that is right where, right where that is.
Is that the one they're replacing? No, you said they were installing a new one.
It's a storm scepter between the catch basins. There are... I haven't seen the engineering drawings, but I know they are working on sizing it and pricing it right now.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. And since the town is going to be dealing with MSB permitting in the next year, I think it's due October... Some stuff is due October 1st. I think this will help toward that.
Thank you.
I move to find that the stone wall at the entrance to Blanchard Farm Lane has not been constructed. Blanchard Farm LLC has indicated the wall serves no functional purpose. The surety estimate dated 12/13/17 has a line item of $3,500 for the stone wall construction plus a 10% contingency factor and inflation factor. Blanchard Farm LLC has voluntarily agreed to forfeit the surety for the stone wall plus a contingency and inflation factor for a total of $4,000 to be used to supplement the purchase and or installation of a storm scepter to be installed by the town south of the existing catch basins between 310 and 318 Country Way and at 320 Country Way that DPW will be purchasing and installing by July 10, 2019.
Second?
Yep.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I mean, they should... The ASBILTS right now are currently being done. So this is just, they wanted to be able to have this resolved and hopefully in the next month be in here with the ASBILTS completed and for the final surety release. They did provide me the information in the past week that the maintenance has been turned over to the homeowners association.
Right, thank you. All right, endorsement of plans seaside and situate.
Yes, we have the set of plans, paper plans, that came in and as one of the conditions of approval, you asked for endorsed plans. Even though it's been recorded, I think it's a good idea to endorse what you determine you want to endorse, whether it's the cover and the five sheets that were recorded. I think that that would make probably the most sense because then they will go back and make us a paper copy. Horstley-Witten will get a copy and there'll be a copy out at the site as well.
Okay. Steve? Okay, all right.
I'll do whatever Karen says we should do.
It was required as part of your conditions and we... I think it just helps everybody.
So where do we sign?
Well, we'll lay them out and we'll...
Okay, at the end, we will sign everything?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like me to give a brief update of where we are with the project, I could do that now?
Yes.
We have received... Received letters today from the DPW regarding the sewer capacity and that they will have to... The license contract is he's going to be installing sewer and water actually has to pull the street opening permit. So those letters were received today, which fulfills Condition 57 and 58. We have the recorded special permit. We have the Niptis permit. We received the check to cover cost of the town's consulting engineer. We have a construction schedule which was given to you last time. And we are in agreement as to the amount of the bond for the planning board bond. We don't physically have the bond in hand yet because the bond estimate just was finalized for the planning board in the last 24 hours and they're still working on the bond wording. But I would highly recommend that we still... I have a tentative pre-construction conference set up on Tuesday. It involves an awful lot of people. I mean, we're anticipating probably at least 20 people. I would recommend that the board allow the pre-construction to go as... And just not allow construction to...
Till we get the bond?
Start until the actual bond is received for both planning and conservation, I believe.
Did you send out the estimate? I haven't seen anything.
I... We just got... I did not send it out to the board.
Okay.
The consulting engineer... We just got the revised estimate in yesterday and the planning board bond amount, I can send it to you if you would like, is eight...
Yeah, I'd like to see the estimate.
Is 8 million...
Six hundred thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars.
And 37 cents?
Eight million, six hundred, thousand, five hundred, ninety-eight dollars.
Okay, can you send us the estimate?
I can send you the estimate. This is... They went back and they revised it after input from the consulting engineer of the list of items. There's gonna be a planning board bond.
Was that Horstley and Witten?
Yes, Horstley-Witten has been chosen for the construction inspections for Phase 1. The selectmen signed the contract the other night and we have the... We have... We put a little extra money in there for a contingency factor, just in case something happens. But it takes... It's taking a little bit longer to get a bond. You can't just get a bond in 24 hours now because of the amount of construction happening in the world. But we have that bond amount.
So just a request, I'd kind of like to see what Horstley and Witten said that made the changes. So is there a history of that correspondence or something? You could just send us a package?
Yes, I can send you the history of the correspondence.
That's great, appreciate it.
All right, do you all feel, are you all in agreement that the pre-construction conference should be next Tuesday? Regardless of not having the bond in place, with the understanding that construction will not commence until bond is in hand?
Yeah, with the explicit...
That will be explicitly... The Conservation Commission is gonna have their own bond and the Board of Selectmen for their agreement are going to have their own bond as well. So there'll be three different bonds. But your bond and conservation bond are the ones that are, you know, are needed right away.
Just, I don't know if there's been any follow-up on the mass DEP notification. That was something that came up, or less. You know, if there's... They've been notified about the follow-up remedial actions or anything?
I do not know that, but that's... They... That's gonna be gone over in the pre-construction conference. They have to notify us when they are going to be doing that. And we're gonna be going over all those steps in the... That are required as part of the permit during the pre-construction conference. They have 120 days and they have to notify us first. But realistically, the contract wasn't signed until Tuesday night.
Right.
So, you know...
Okay.
The contract?
For the construction observation.
Oh.
For Horstley and Witten?
Because that's the part that's under Phase 2. Review of the performance bond was under...
I thought you meant the P and S. The P and S is done, right? I mean, you guys own the property?
Toll Brothers owns the property. We have a copy of the deed, et cetera.
Okay.
So, yes, we are going to be reviewing that extensively in the pre-construction conference. And that's why the Horstley-Witten's LSP is going to be coming to the pre-construction conference as well.
Cool.
All right, so that's our understanding. Thank you.
You don't need to vote on any of this, right? Just direction?
Just direction. I mean, because we're gonna be having police, fire...
No, I meant just on this issue about going ahead with the pre-construction, right?
I highly recommend it.
Right.
I think we're all... We're all in agreement with that?
With the express provision?
That will be, yes, yes.
That no construction starts until the bonds are in place.
All right. Discussion of alternate member recommendation?
We'll let you know tomorrow morning about this.
Yeah, we'll...
Okay, tomorrow.
Are we doing that on... Are we doing that in executive session or what?
Yeah, it's not an exec...
Oh, it's not?
It's not an executive session.
Okay, I thought you said that last time, so...
All right, alternate member, we have two to choose from. Ben, what do you think?
I thought that they were both good candidates considering it took a long time to get some resumes sent in. And it seems like they're both interested in kind of putting in the effort for the town. I guess if I had to kind of think about what our current strengths and weaknesses on our board, I do like the fact that Louis, Mrs. Louis? I do like the fact that she has a legal background and has worked as an attorney in various aspects of real estate. So I think that is a definite strength for her. Other than that, I don't think they would both be good.
Steve?
Well, I agree with Ben. I think it was great to have two viable candidates in here to talk with. I would have to say I am also leaning towards Rebecca Lewis. I do like her legal background. I also thought that some of the things that she was focused on are sort of consistent with what, you know, is kind of on the front of our list of things to do, like the master plan, like the water and the sewer issues. And really, sort of how do we deal with large developments? I thought that was a pretty good answer to some of the questions about what did she see as the sort of big issues coming up. So, I mean, I could work with either one of them. And if you're asking me to pick one, I would probably give a slight nod to Ms. Lewis.
Bill?
I agree with Stephen. I think either one of them would be an asset to the board. They also stack up the blocks the same way. I think that Rebecca probably gives us the legal piece which we're missing. And I think it would be worth all to have that.
Got it? And I absolutely agree with all of that. And as do I, there's no point in rehearsing it. So we will go before the Board of Selectmen on the...
I'm gonna try to get you on the September 18th agenda because it has to be a roll call vote.
All right.
And so I will try to find out the legal wording, what I have to do for, you know, what we have to do, but...
We have to submit a nomination.
We have to submit a nomination and I will ask Ms. Lewis to be present.
Yes.
And for the meeting.
Once it's over, we can send a letter of thanks to Mr. Fiore for having applied?
Yeah, and maybe encourage him to... There's plenty of boards that need good people.
Yes, absolutely, without a doubt.
Is that likely to be first thing on their agenda?
Ask them if they can do it at 7:00?
I'll try to ask if we can get it on early because...
Really, that's not...
In and out.
In and out. Okay, approve minutes, please? Approve minutes, please?
I move to approve the minute meetings for July twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, and August ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
The ones that were sent on email?
Yes.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Accounting?
I move to approve the requisition of one hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents to Gatehouse Media for legal ad for Ninety-Two Millgate Street Public Hearing, Cedar Road and Shade Trees. For five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents for the release of stormwater bond for Twenty-Eight Otis Place, Twenty-Seven Allen Place to Blanchett Farm LLC. For a hundred seventeen dollars and forty-four cents for the release of the planning board guarantee funds to Blanchett Farm LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Liaison reports.
GBA, nothing new. Water Resources are meeting next week, so I'll have some more info after that. It's not a liaison report, but I was kind of surprised, I saw the Mariner today, that apparently Situette received this rating for senior-friendly communities, were one of thirty in Massachusetts.
Really?
And this, I guess, was something the Council on Aging did. But really, when I read the article, it's very, it has a very much a planning slant to it. And I was surprised that I've never heard about this before until reading about it in the Mariner today. So I don't know, maybe we could talk with, a COA person could come in and tell us a little more about the program, because it, it had to do with kind of like, long-term, how the town's going to adapt to aging populations, what, what we're, you know, and then there was things that we were committing to, to get this kind of label for ourselves. So that was, that's it.
Interesting.
That, that was the downfall of the housing plan, right? When Laura brought it in like a year ago, or whatever it was?
I don't, I haven't looked at the housing plan.
I remember that. She, she gave us a copy to look at or something, but-
Right. You remember that, Bill, the deck though?
What's that?
It was like the affordable housing, it wasn't affordable housing, but it was some kind of housing master plan or something, that I think Laura was involved in sort of spearheading.
We did a housing plan.
Yeah, you did a housing plan, right.
Yeah. And it's one of the sort of things that, that should be on our list for the master plan, right?
Right.
Is integrating-
Integrating that.
-back into the master plan.
All right. CPC met two weeks ago. What I believe will be coming forward the Fourth of September before the Selectmen, there's four plus acres of land at the end of Sunset Road that overlooks the harbor, the McDonald property, for five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. And CPC, I believe, is going to look into purchasing that property. And I think it makes a tremendous amount of sense.
CPC is going to look into buying it?
Yes. There will be offsets through NOAA and a number of other groups toward that amount of money. You know, frankly, I for one don't want to sit at the Mill Wharf and, and look at a great big huge house. I really don't. And it would be lovely to be able to purchase a piece of property that belongs to everybody in this town east of Three A. That's really very visible. I, I think it's an important acquisition. So, other than that, uh-
Any more reasonable? It started out at a little over two million dollars.
No, try three. It's huge. And now it's everybody's, all of the players are in agreement, and this is the price. And hopefully, we can go forward. It was in the Mariner today that CPC is now accepting applications for the annual town meeting. This particular item will go, for the McDonald property, will go before town meeting in November. Right away. So CPC is trying to have things sort of on an ongoing basis, so everything isn't smushed into one spot. EDC, Sudapisa is now chair. And going forward.
With the Green Bush Visiting Plan?
Yeah, that too. And there's a lot on their, they have a lot on their plate. I'll still be on, on the commission, but I'm, I'm not chair anymore. Any other liaisons reports?
Not a liaison report, but Steve and I were both at the water meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Just an interesting aside, that a lot of people don't know how town government works. And that was pretty obvious by the questions. I thought it was a great wording experience for the entire town to watch. How slow-moving and torturous and frustrating legislation can be to try to move anything forward. I don't know that anything came out of it, except that we need to have water plants in place sooner rather than later. But I thought it was interesting, a lot of people I never ever saw before were at that meeting.
And you may never see them again.
And I may never see them again, yeah.
Well, I, I thought it was, there was a lot of conversation that tended to confuse things more than clarify things. But one of the things that became clear was that we actually have two problems, not one, right? We have a problem with the old ductile iron pipe rusting away, which is supposed to be solved by the, the last two miles next spring. And I have some questions about that. But, but that's only one of the problems. The bigger problem is really the, the amount of manganese we have in our water system. And the fact that at whatever concentrations we have, it tends to precipitate out as kind of black or reddish-brown material. And that won't go away with the replacement of pipes. It has to be addressed separately. They appear to be trying, being, they're trying to address it with installing a, a filter on one of the pumps to filter out manganese, which is naturally occurring in all the groundwater wells. And as I read, it also occurs in surface water as well. But that's one of six wells that they're treating. It wasn't real, there wasn't really a broader sort of plan on how they were going to manage the overall levels. I think the idea is that the highest concentration is coming out of this one particular well. So that by reducing it there and, and blending it with the other wells, that, that they'll reduce the concentrations. I don't know if it's going to reach the level that you need to, to manage it. But it's not, and, you know, I've done a little bit of reading on it, and it's not an uncommon problem. It's been around for decades and decades in all of Massachusetts. And there's some pretty extensive literature and technical recommendations on what to do to address that particular issue. And, you know, it's just not clear to me that, it wasn't clear in the meeting anyway, what that total game plan was. But that's the longer-term, more ubiquitous problem. And it doesn't get solved by replacing pipes. So I think we're, you know, when we first talked about replacing pipes, I don't think it was quite clear that we had multiple problems like that. It was sort of the manganese is causing the, the pipe corrosion, and that's not really the case.
But a lot of those pipes do still need to be replaced. From what I understand, the pipe that goes up Booth Hill Road was put in in nineteen thirty-four.
Well, that's, those are the pipes they're talking about. They're talking about all the pre-nineteen thirty-five, unlined ductile iron pipe that needs to be replaced. And according to the presentation at the meeting, all of it has been done, except the mile or two over at Oceanside and Turner Road out there, which is supposed to be done next spring. Maybe, maybe it wasn't clear, maybe there's still more, but they didn't articulate that at the meeting.
All right.
It does need, I think, some clarity and some leadership on this.
So does that come under the master plan, Steve? Is that included?
Well, the master plan talks about infrastructure, right? So there should be a plan that it sort of addresses that. I'm thinking the plan is something that, you know, gets developed by the DPW and has a, has an overall approach, because they're going to have to manage and operate whatever gets installed.
They're also going to have to maintain whatever. That's been one of the biggest issues.
That's what I meant by manage and operate, but-
They have to maintain.
And, you know, the installation of this filter on, on one of the wells, it's, I think they said it was seven or nine million dollars. It was a big number. And that didn't really address the operating costs. That was just the installation cost. And anytime you put a filter on something, it also has, has other impacts, like it increases pressure drop, which is decreasing capacity of a, of a pump. So there are a lot of sort of elements that would have to be addressed. And I would assume if they're going to do this, they're going to also need to identify an operating budget that will pay for operating this new filter as well. But that wasn't addressed at the meeting.
Lots to think about. All right. Finally, we have the planning and development report. Karen?
Yeah, we remain very busy with the applications we're receiving. We're working on the stormwater regs. We're going to have an internal meeting with a first pass of some thoughts on it between Brad, Amy, and myself. And then we're going to be meeting sometime in September with the Stormwater Working Group. We went to a presentation yesterday afternoon about the MS Four Stormwater for that, the town has to do a submittal by October first, because the, it's here. I mean, their, their stormwater management for the town is gonna, it's going to be getting stricter.
So what's the ram, what's the, what's the control? What's the ramification? Is it road runoff? Or how, how is it manifesting itself in what the town has to do?
The town has in, some impaired waters, and this is just where, and we're, we're a reporting community. So they have to, DPW has hired consultants to come up with this plan. And then we have, under that, that's basically EPA mandated. And under that, you have construction general permits. And you have post-construction follow-up, where that's the disturbance over an acre. And some of those requirements are going to be getting a little bit stricter than Massachusetts' DEP.
So, so you're writing, first of all, a report that says where these impaired bodies are? And then, second of all, a plan to mitigate?
The South Coastal watershed is impaired. I mean, the whole, I mean, there's places that are impaired. And, um-
I'm just confused. Is this a report on how big the problem is? Or is this a plan on how to address the problem?
It's a plan on how to address the problem. So I think that we're going to be, need to be coordinating with DPW as we evolve the stormwater regulations for the future.
And was there a discussion about what the major, you know, sort of mitigation issues are that are going to impact us?
Um, for, for the town as a whole?
Yeah.
It's reporting and it's, it's cleaning up your, your waters. But you have to do-
Well, I guess what I'm thinking is, does that mean we have to put in additional stormwater management controls?
They may need to, yeah. I mean, they have to do public education.
Yeah.
There's, I, I'm supposed to be getting a copy of the slide presentation, but they, public education's one of them, these construction general permits. It's oper, it's, I guess, stuff with the treatment plant, eliminating inflow and infiltration, you know, so a lot of that kind of stuff. So illicit discharges. It's all the towns have to, have to do it.
Well, if there's a, if there's a PowerPoint, I'd like to see it. If you get it, could you send us a copy?
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think we're going to need to do some coordination, so that, you know, they have some specific requirements about how much, you know, storing the first inch of rain runoff and perhaps ninety percent TSS.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think we just have to be mindful of that. It was a very good presentation. So you heard the update on toll. You heard a little bit where we are with Ninety, with Curtis Estates. I believe the fire station sign came into the ZBA in the past day or so for, they're applying for a special permit. So I think last we met on that in June. I think you probably technically need to provide a recommendation to the ZBA. So would you like me to schedule that for the next meeting?
Sure.
So they're, they have to get a permit, not from us, but from the ZBA?
Right. It's under a sign, and it's, I believe it's a permit from the ZB, a special permit-
Because it's a digital sign.
From, from the ZBA.
So is it a waiver or something? Or?
It's under, it's under a sign in our, um-
Okay.
In the, I forget which section of the zoning bylaw. But it says input from the planning board.
Seven ten.
Seven ten, yeah.
Seven. I need to page it in seven.
Sorry. I have your first numbers. What can I tell you? Ninety-seven, there you go.
It's, it's according to Section seven-ten, I believe.
Yeah.
And so, C, seven-ten-two-C is possibly the section. I haven't seen the application, but we talked about it briefly when the chief came in with his other projects in June. So you may, we might, might want to talk about it at the next meeting.
But needed for directional purposes.
And this is, for those that are, you know, told to evacuate, it's going to be on the sign.
I haven't seen yet.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to review and comment first, so.
I haven't seen the application yet, but, I mean, that's one of the things that the chief covered when, the electric sign board, when he was here in June. And last, the design review committee also, the chief met with them on that as well.
And it seems to me, if I heard from somewhere, that the money for this sign was donated by either Columbia Gas or-
Portion of it.
Portion of it.
Portion of it, yeah. So if you'd like, I can just add it to the, for a recommendation for the next agenda. And then Fifty Country Way, they are progress, they're progressing on that. I don't know when, I don't know when they're going to have the fire access road in the back complete. They have submitted samples for, and they're waiting for results back for the Proctor, I believe, or, or that. The handicap ramp out, out in front of Building B, it's, it's in, but it needs to, it's, they have to do some, you know, some minor changes that Bob is now reviewing.
This is for the one they're occupying?
No.
Oh.
Building B.
Building B is the one on the other side of the parking lot.
Oh, I didn't realize you were talking about Building B. Okay.
And then on Building A, the replacement Weatherby Building, I believe that there's, there's stairs out the front. And technically, I believe there's, the plans show stairs off the porch in the front to the side, to the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So are they correcting that? Or are they asking for a change?
No, they're not asking for a change. I just, I probably missed them the first time on the drawing.
You need a magnifying glass to read some of this stuff.
So, the important thing is that all stairs and ramps work, because that's, that's what you want for accessibility.
Right. But we were also going for an aesthetic there too, right?
Yes.
We can pick that up at the end. There, I think there might be a few things that we want them to follow up on. But we need the public safety aspect of it done first. But we need the public safety aspect of it done first.
I know, what I'm saying is, if the stairs are in the wrong place, then maybe now is the time to tell them.
Oh, no, they're not, they're, they're not in the wrong place.
Oh, I thought that's what you just said?
No.
No, no, I.
Sorry?
No, I didn't, I.
What did you just say then?
I said I didn't really see them on the plan.
Well, you didn't see the stairs on the plan?
Yes, so, the stairs, the fr- the front porch is gonna have stairs off the front and, uh, you know, going out.
Off the side.
And off the side.
And what are we gonna do about the emergency access in the back?
They're, they're, I mean, they're working on it.
You're not showing an occupancy permit for anything else that's done.
There you go.
Right.
Ben?
Um, I just, I didn't, it's to Karen about planning development, I saw that Brad was on the Board of Selectmen for sewer discussion with, about Drew Company. Do you know anything about, does anyone know anything about that?
I heard it was very positive.
Okay.
And there were two avenues that they were exploring, but to that end, I'm not really sure. Okay? So I know they're going for Mass Works Grant.
Yeah, they filed for Mass Work Grant, uh, you know, I think at the end of the day, for something that big, we need the water and sewer study done. And, you know, it's not gonna be good enough just to say, oh, we think the capacity's there.
Right.
They, they, I, I didn't, I didn't stay for that, um, part of the selectmen's meeting, so I.
I'll, I'll watch it or something.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll have to watch it myself.
Okay, do you have anything else?
I think that's where we are.
Alright, anybody else on the board have anything that they would like to, what, say or talk about? Then I will entertain Bill's motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
We've got some drawings over there and we have some.
Do you wanna keep these things that he handed out?
Yeah, for the record.
Yeah, I think that was the stuff, all that's the stuff, and these too.
This is Cumberland's. There's, oh, we got three different guys from here.
Yeah, cause we got the Gunther Tootie stuff too.
Yeah.
I don't know if you got that.